All right, we will call the meeting to order at seven forty-one. We'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're looking at that thing. All right, any changes to the agenda?
There is. We have two changes to the agenda. We had a request from Councilmember Stiles to move the SIU ordinance amendment down to general business, so it's now item B. And Linda requested providing the council an update on election-related items, which will be added as item A under administration under reports.
Do we have a motion to approve the amendment as amended?
Motion to approve.
I want a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, no presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements. Is anybody here for public comment? Anybody online want to provide any public comment? Not seeing any. We will move on. Any questions to the consent agenda beyond the one item that was already polled? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. No public hearings. Move on to general business. The supplemental, nope, yep, supplemental compensation study information.
So this, of course, is some of the continuing work on the compensation study that was completed in 2023. As the council knows, there were some supplemental informational items that we were unable to get complete because of response rates, et cetera, prior to the end of the year. And so this was work that we've continued. So while we took a look at the basic compensation structure, these additional items were related to what you would say would be supplemental pay, how you calculate overtime, callback, working holidays, those types of items. We did present that information to the council at the last meeting, and the council gave some general direction of items that they would want to pursue or supported to be competitive and consistent with the market. One item that the council requested some additional information on was the longevity pay and what it would cost to implement a longevity pay program for non-police, non-full-time employees or not, or full-time employees and aren't police officers. So we did go out, we took a look at that within the market and, or what the cost for that would be, and it is contained within the council memo. What we determined is that the cost to implement that would be around thirty-three thousand dollars using this year's fee schedule if we were to implement it for an, you know, for the entire year. What we found with regards to the implementation is that's really the implement, the initial implementation cost because we have a number of employees, a handful, that have been with the city for a long period of time. And so you would have that additional cost of all those employees suddenly getting longevity pay. Once it's implemented, though, the cost would be much more negligible going forward because you're going to have an employee, an employee here, an employee there, maybe two employees this year, maybe nobody the following year, who would be getting, you know, partial steps every so many years. Where right now, if you think of it, most of our employees get a step every year. That has a much bigger financial impact than these longevity steps. So once we get past the initial implementation, the cost is very, very modest overall. But the initial cost would be much more substantial. So given that information, we would be asking the council to give further direction on where you would like to go with regards to these items, which the council indicated some support for in previous discussions. This would include an adjustment to the police department for years to max step, to go from seven years to max step to six, to be close, more consistent with the market, taking a look at how holiday pay is provided to change it from premium, double pay on premium holidays or very traditional holidays such as Christmas, Christmas Eve, January, you know, New Year's Day, and going to one and a half times for all holidays. Overtime calculation, we found within the market, everybody counts paid time off towards calculating overtime. Callback going from a minimum of two hours to a minimum of three hours for callback pay when we have employees called back. Longevity pay, implementation based on the information we've now provided you, going to three hours for court time as opposed to the two we currently provide for officers and providing an eight dollar an hour additional pay for field training officers for police officers.
So I can't recall, but all of them we had consensus on at the last meeting, correct, except for maybe we needed more information on longevity pay?
That is my recollection.
Right. So, I mean, do you have the direction for all the other ones based on the last meeting's discussion?
Yeah, so it's really a question of, do you want to continue to proceed with those? Because they obviously all have a budgetary impact. And with regards to some of them, we'll have to have discussions with the Public Works Labor Union related to it because they have a contract, and so we'd have to modify it. The other question is the timing of the implementation. Do you want to implement it the beginning of the year? Do you want to take a look at the cost of these and weigh it out for the beginning of the year as we work through the budget process? Are there things that you want to implement within this budget year, either all of them or some of them? Knowing that once you do it, it's going to be baked into next year's budget.
Any initial reactions?
I haven't, what do you think?
I mean, so we're looking at, what, twelve to fifteen thousand for the rest of this year, but then, you know, the thirty-three, well, no, then it's just baked in moving forward, but we have to assume that in the budget. So then that adds the percent and a half or almost two percent, you know, next year.
So for implementation within this year's budget, we have a couple of things working for us. Reasonably, the implementation timeframe and what we would recommend would be implementation at the beginning of September. So that means you're only having to fund it for the last third of the year. So the cost of implementation within this year's budget is reduced. It's not budgeted, but the cost impact would be less. We also have the advantage that with, is a vacancy within the police department creates elbow room within the general fund between now and the end of the year. The impact for implementation yet this year in the other funds, so you'd be talking fire department and the three utility funds, the total dollar amount is small enough that it really, I mean, there's variables within those departments that far exceed those dollar amounts. So the impact would be negligible. The real thing to keep in mind, though, is, so I think reasonably, if the council wanted to, we could implement all of these things within this year's budget. It's going to be, though, then they're baked in with regards to the 2025 budget, and that's where we're going to see, see the impact. I do want to point out one thing. When we're making that estimate about within this year's budget, we're taking a look at where we are year-to-date, and we're assuming that we're going to have reasonable budget compliance both on revenues and expenditures through the end of the year. So it's a bit of a swag because there's no guarantees, but we feel reasonably that we could absorb within the general fund and the other funds the projected expenses.
And I guess another way to ask, too, is, is there any of these that we want to stagger out or not implement? I mean, I'm not worried about this year. I mean, it'll be a wash, most likely, with a variety of different things. It's the, are there any that we want to stagger because we want to offset the cost for a period of time for any particular reason? And I'm not advocating for that. I'm just...
Which one's the highest cost?
So the, the greatest expense is going to be overtime calculation. However, the longevity pay implementation is also going to be expensive, just that initial, you know, as you're, as you're implementing it. And that's primarily because your longest, generally speaking, your longest-serving employees are your department heads. And so it's going to have a big, it's going to have a big impact.
The department heads out of longevity.
It's up to the council.
So if we were going to stagger anyone, or, I mean, I would think maybe the longevity pay, but I don't feel strongly either way.
Amanda thoughts?
I mean, I think we just get it implemented. I guess my question, what I don't necessarily understand how it will work is with the union contract, because they have a contract through a certain time, would it make sense to make these changes when the contract negotiations are happening?
So we have, I have a choice. So we have a contract that's locked in until the end of the contract. We're in the first year of the contract now, so, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five through twenty-six, and we could make them implementable in twenty-seven. I think there, so all the things that we're talking about, especially if they've been provided to non-union employees, they're going to want it. I think there's also a morale issue that you're doing it for these employees and not for us. We've never taken the approach that if there's something we're kind of doing across the board that we wouldn't be proactive. I mean, and to be honest, the union's not going to say, hey, no, don't provide us this, right?
We'd have the ability to, like, amend the current contract?
Absolutely. We've done it for other minor things in the past. I've already spoken with the business representative and the shop stewards about it. They're aware that we're having this discussion. And they're aware that based on whatever direction we get back from the council, I may be coming back to them to talk about that.
Can you remind me of maybe what we were estimating at this point in the budgeting process? What, you know, we're looking at, if we don't just have a vanilla next year kind of planning purpose, what are we looking at for, with just operating inflation increases and things like that, what we're looking at for a potential impact next year? I know we're super early and you make...
I can't tell you that.
Can you guess?
No, I don't want to because there's still pieces of information.
Always make me guess.
There's, I mean, I can throw, I can throw you a number, but we really don't know. There's some big pieces of information that we still don't have, like fiscal disparities and other items that could have. I mean, if we're talking like a one percent, you know, a couple percent tax impact, those variables that are still out there at that point are greater than that.
Because this, I mean, this really just bakes in an extra one and a half percent, basically.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if you take a look at it and you look at the total implementation cost within the general fund for everything that we're talking about, it's about, within this year's budget, it would have been like thirty-seven thousand dollars. If you assume inflation and other costs, let's say round it to forty thousand dollars, you're going to be looking within the scope of the budget somewhere between a one and three-quarters to two percent tax impact to implement it from a tax impact standpoint. There'll be the little bit that'll trickle out into the other funds, but we're talking about tax impact. That we can give you. Ballpark, it's going to be somewhere in that one and three-quarters to two percent tax impact.
I was wondering what the other stuff, what that one and three-quarters to two was going to add on top of.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it adds up.
And we're not, I, Kelly and I actually were just having this conversation today. We're not quite to the point where we would be able to give you that number.
Right. I mean, I guess if we do it, we just have to be prepared that now if we want to, let's hypothetically get under ten or get under eight or get under seven, we're already baking in a one and three-quarters, two percent, so we're going to have to cut out other things to get there. I mean, I, I am kind of with Amanda, too. I mean, rip off the Band-Aid, get it level set. We wanted to be with market. That was the whole point of doing the market comp analysis and everything was to be competitive, slightly more competitive than the rest of the market and reinforce the awesome staff that we do have, attract more awesome staff.
Yeah, I mean, I do love the fact that we have staff that has been here forever and don't want to change that. But we're also a small town and our taxes are, in my opinion, high, and I don't want to add to that, so. But I'm with you guys.
And we'll start, well, yeah, I mean, so direct, you need the direction now to move forward with it, longevity pay, all the other things. You'll bring it back. I mean, even if we were to kick it to August, I mean, it's not going to, October first, it's not going to matter anything. Even if we're going to kick it to January, like, I'm not worried about this year. It's the ongoing, everything, right?
It's the next year, so once you pull the trigger, it's done. So then there's a question of, do you, do you need more information before you feel comfortable pulling the trigger?
I want to know what the rest of the budget's going to look like. I mean, I mean, really, that would, if I knew if it's going to, if we're sitting on six and a half and this is going to add an extra two, okay, I can live with that. If we're sitting at twelve and a half and it's like, oh my gosh, now we're going to be up to fourteen, fifteen and have to...
We're not at twelve and a half.
Right. So I mean, I mean, so even that, I mean, it's helpful because that's where I don't want to stick us further into a box.
What if something crazy happens and unexpected and...
And I guess I would, I would probably trade out other things than this, maybe. So I might be willing, I would be willing to potentially look at kicking other things down the road or kick the can further. But this piece, I would be okay with probably advocating for. Feeling good?
No. So are, so are you, so...
Are you bringing this back for us to, like, approve formally?
Yeah, so what we're, we're looking at is direction, so we know what actions, what action items to bring in.
I'm hearing we have consensus to bring it all back to start on September first, if that's reasonable timeline and everything else.
We'll time it with the beginning of a payroll period, but yeah, it would be early September. Okay, so, so directed, we'll begin working on those items. So a lot of it's just policy-related, but there will be the union contract piece for those items that are contained within their contract. Okay, thank you.
All right, SIU ordinance.
So you have the memo in your packet, but maybe I'll have Rich give a brief overview of, of what it is and why we're recommending that we make these changes to, to the current ordinance.
That's pretty straightforward. This amendment really looks at trying to capture from applicants what the expected variations in their use. We're historically told from an applicant, we're going to use five million gallons a year or twenty million gallons a year, and that's it. But as explained in the memo, those variations can have impacts in different ways. And we learned that quite acutely this year, working through all of the different, the pump test and the, and the aquifer impacts and the treatment plant capacity. All of that stuff is affected by those variations in use, and we're good right now. But we have to, when we get an application, also consider, we've got built into the ordinance some room for growth we have to consider. We have to consider our own peak uses, and if those all stack up incorrectly, we really should know that information to try and avoid problems. So this is simply to try and require and enforce more detail from applicants about their variations in water use, seasonally, monthly, even their peak days can be very important.
Because some users might be relatively, you know, with a relatively narrow range, but other users might have significant fluctuations in their seasonal or even daily. And knowing, and can they even predict when it's going to be?
Some sort of agricultural related might have a really strong fall water use as it's processing a bunch of vegetables and be flat the rest of the year. It just can be all, so we'd like to make sure we try as best they can to give us that information. And that's what this is about.
Yeah.
Yeah, is, yeah, with amendment, be retroactive, so.
No.
It would not.
No, so, because we have one, would have one industrial user, so.
Yep.
That agreement is done and approved and in, in force right now.
And remind me, was there something in either the SIU agreement or in the ordinance that says any updates or changes to the ordinance or the agreement, but it must be the ordinance can't impact any... Once you sign it, it has to be two years. There has to be a two-year window or something, not grace period, but my brain goes back to...
I don't recall that.
Okay.
But, but generally speaking, if you have an existing user that's coming in...
We can just change it on them the next year and pull the rug out.
But even if there is that, if you're outside of that window, if they're coming in to amend it, let's say they're asking for more water. So let's assume like Niagara, they come in for future phases and they need, because right now it's, it's got a cap. If they want to grow that, let's say, double it, make it fifty percent higher, whatever, they would have to amend, they would have to amend that agreement. And then Andrea, would we have the ability at that time to then, to require that, request that type of information? I believe we would.
I think we would, yes.
Because they're amending it, so we have the, so we would then get that information from, although they were very cooperative, we requested that kind of information from them as part of the process. But we want to make sure that we, it's not just, hey, we're asking and they're nice and responding. We want to make sure that it's just part of the application process upfront.
Okay, and I know I did write the memo, and with what you said, we learned from the pump test. But I don't know if I'm just maybe living on a different planet, but I thought the pump test showed that we can tolerate pumping at even a higher amount without having to worry about well interference or, or anything like that. So I'm just, I'm just confused.
Again, but maybe imagine that we're twenty years down the road from now and we've tripled or doubled in size. Those, that, that monthly use, if everybody's pumping at the same time, could be far bigger than what we did during the pump test. So we do want to know that, even though at this point, I mean, so we're, they're kind of not the same issue, but certainly a monthly peaking or a seasonal peaking can be more impactful on the aquifer than a uniform usage.
I think the idea is that as you start having more potentially large users on the system and you start stacking their peaks, over time, start stacking now two or three or four people with peaks on top of our, the peaks of our normal residents, so to speak, for watering lawns, we need to have a better understanding and be able to predict this is where we are, what we have capacity for on the system to be able to handle for those peaks, because you build your system for the peaks.
Okay, because I know multiple people at multiple times did ask about summer usage and, you know, watering lawns, if, if that would matter. And I feel like, and I could be wrong, but I feel like the answer was always that it wouldn't matter. And in fact, having a high vol, volume water user like Niagara would be good because it would keep like a consistency. And so this, to me, is just saying a different story?
No, so you're right. So we, we did have those questions, but we've looked at this one user and the capacity of our system. This is about getting information from future users or changes to that user and having a better understanding of that information for our system as we develop it into the future. And what you also said was true, having, and that's separate from this, of having a base level, a base consistent flow, which is more consistent with this user, is good for the operation of the system. But this is really an idea of being able, additionally, when we're looking at the system and evaluating its capacity, is getting more information to better evaluate the peaking issue.
Okay, and then what happens when we go to amend our water permit again for Niagara's second phase, or do we, are we going to get the numbers from them then, or will it...
These numbers are required when somebody applies for service or for a change in service. We will already know from these applications, say we have five of them in hand and we go for our next, and I'm just making things up. But that information would be used in us determining what our new appropriation should be.
Because when we, if we have an SIU agreement, those have, there are limits in there. So we can utilize those limits as well as what their historical usage has been, if they're an existing user, to be able to do an analysis for what we're requesting, the operations of our system, when we're doing capital planning, et cetera. And when we have somebody wholly new coming in and we want to evaluate it against any capacity that we have in our existing system, understanding those peaking factors will be important.
Okay, and then in the memo, it says that we can come up with strategies to manage impacts on private wells, like giving notice and operational changes, ramp up and max rate limits. I mean, what, what does that mean? Like, would we give notice to private well owners that they might run out of water or like what?
Nope, nope, it might be, and we're already required to do this for our first, for when Niagara comes online, we expect to use more water. We're required to notify people, just so they're aware, if they see something weird, they know the city's pumping more and maybe it's related. That's what that's about. But if we know there's, and, and as we go through all these water quality investigations, for example, and we find what the link was, what the cause was, perhaps by knowing, we expect in two months, we're going to be increasing or one, we can let people know and they might be able to take some proactive measures, like flushing their lines more often. I'm just making stuff up again, but it just, it's just more information, like you talked about in the goals and vision. It's that engagement, getting, getting the news out, what we've had. You know, I probably had a dozen new complaints after we sent out the invitation for this information meeting. And I think people just had no idea what to do with, oh, I've got this problem. I don't know, they don't know we're doing anything. Now they do, they submit it, so we start that process and go on, but it's, yeah. I don't know what those things might be, but it's not that they would run out of water. We're going to try and take care of that before we ever get to that point.
The idea is it might give us more information to be proactive in communicating.
Okay, I'm just really concerned with Niagara not being a meeting to participate in this. I mean, what if...
Well, they didn't have these rules, but we have all that information from them.
I remember having the discussion of what their monthly would be, because we talked about a monthly tracking or requiring instead of just the annual piece of it.
Yeah, we have that from...
And we know, I mean, we have to assume unless they shut down shop for two months, three months, you know. I think the concern would be are they going to make up for it and try to, you know, ramp up? And, and I think that's where even this is trying to get at, you know, less of a Niagara-type facility pulling water or user, those that might, you know, expect to use ten million a year and they use nine and a half million in July and they don't use any the rest of the year, because the department doesn't care. They don't, we get to do, use three hundred sixty-five, we can use it in January and still be in compliance with the department as far as they care.
Okay, so I'm hearing, based on what we know, we do have the ability to serve Niagara, even with their variations?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, okay, with the flow, okay. I got a few questions. I just want to make sure I had them all answered.
Angie, I just, just so you know, even serving them in their peak month, in our peak month, we'd be pumping less water per month than we did during our pump test.
Okay, and then what about our, our water treatment plant? There's something in there about capacity.
So that's where you get to sort of that peak day. Josh gave the example of nine and a half million in one month and nothing the rest of the year. I mean, there could be somebody that has, and I'll just, for example, they do a special operation once a year where they clean all their equipment and they're running water like crazy and they use, you know, a million and a half gallons. We want to know that because that is, you know, pushing, so the numbers are less important than the fact that we know this slug of demand is coming on that day. We can make sure the towers are full and ahead of time, that type of thing. So that really is about the plant. The daily is about the plant.
How many million gallons of water can our plant hold a day now?
We can, we can process, and it depends how you measure it, but somewhere in the million and a half to two million if we're pushing it, so gallons a day.
Okay, and Niagara would not, with Niagara, we, it wouldn't impact, okay.
Even if full buildout, even if we were to hit our, you know, three sixty-five, that's still just a million a day, assuming it's consistent, but it's not.
And that's not all them.
Right.
They're only allowed what, one...
One fifty-five.
One fifty-five a year.
Yep. Yeah, so this phase of Niagara is all baked in and vetted. We can serve what they've told us they'll use.
Okay, I guess I'm just mostly wondering why this didn't come forward sooner.
That's a great question. I think it's just largely what we've learned over the last year. I mean, we did have some questions about it when this first was adopted, but we also knew their numbers that it could be handled. But just in, in working through, decided let's get this formalized so that we don't have to rely on the goodwill of an applicant. They don't tell us the numbers, they don't get the, the service. A little more teeth to it.
Well, it's upfront, it's transparent, it's knows, know what the expectations are, too.
Yep.
Okay, but I'm sorry, one more time, you're saying though, with Niagara's second phase, when we increase our water permit for their second phase, they still are, they still don't have to give us their official numbers?
They do. They have to revise their agreement because it's limited to their first phase.
Got it, okay.
So it opens up that again.
And if we can't handle it, then we can deny it.
And that specifically says right in the SIU agreement that they signed, we, I mean, we're going to do everything in our power or commercial, whatever, whatever we have the ability to influence, but they may be on our control and our...
It even lists the things we have to make sure we can provide first before we can consider...
We can legally deny it if we can, if we cannot handle it, okay.
And we need, we need a new water appropriation permit anyway. I mean, unless they got going fast enough beyond development, but we could still even decide if it's within, you know, where we're at as far as development goes, I would think of saying, no, we plan on this much development over the next... I would think of saying, no, we plan on this much development over the next three years. You've just gobbled that up with second phase, and now we have nothing with the water appropriation permit, so I mean, we would be able to have that discussion there then, too. Even if we have the capacity in our current.
Okay, and are they aware that their second phase is not guaranteed?
It's in the contract, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, all right, uh, so do we have a motion to adopt ordinance number two ninety-nine, amending everything that's listed there?
So moved.
I'll second it. Uh, all the, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? That one passes, uh, and then we need another one, I guess I could have done them together, but uh, I'll make a motion to adopt summary ordinance number three hundred.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? All right, move on to reports. Administration.
Linda wanted to provide an update to council related to general election candidate filing and other, any other miscellaneous election-related items.
Yeah, it was about the candidate filing. Um, I just wanted to remind everybody that the general election is happening on November fifth.
What?
And, and we're gonna be looking for three positions that will be open for candidacy filings. And one of them is the mayor for a two-year term and two council positions for four-year terms. Um, the candidate filings will be open July thirtieth to August thirteenth. Um, we will have, um, we'll accept the filings um, at City Hall under normal br-, um, business hours, eight to four thirty. Um, except, um, we have additional hours on August thirteenth, which is also the primary, will be open till five o'clock for the filings. Um, you come in, see me, it's a two dollar filing fee, and you'll get a packet for all the information for filing. If you have any questions, contact me.
All right.
Linda, do you have a report on absentee voting and that process? Cuz not everybody's familiar with it about what you can do and when you can do it and how far in advance you can do it and so on.
Absentee voting started June twenty-something. Um, we have accepted seven applications already, or ballots. Um, tomorrow starts direct balloting, which if you come in to vote, you can actually vote on the ballot and then put your ballot into the um,
Tabulator.
Tabulator, I always forget that word. Um, so, uh, before that, it was a envelope system that you put it in, and then I ran them tonight, we're able to, uh, after business hours, run them through. We had seven people come in for this, and like I said, um, the direct balloting now will be open until Monday, August twelfth. Um, and we do have some extra Saturday hours, and that Monday before, we also open till five o'clock to accept the absentee ballots. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anything from Public Works?
No.
Police Department.
Um, things are going well. Um, following up the state of Minnesota has a sense of humor, soon as Brady leaves, the state says, oh, it's your turn to do an audit. So we are working our way through two audits at this point. That's great.
Right.
Typical.
And I just wanna let you guys know, you heard that I'm gonna be gone on vacation, so Josh will be uh, covering the city and in charge while I'm gone, so should be in his capable hands.
Or he'll submit the audit for you, it'll be fine.
I'm gonna direct him to just do it. That's all we have.
Awesome. Uh, Engineering?
No report.
Uh, Community Development?
No report.
Parks?
Can I change my mind?
Yeah.
You already checked off.
I did, I, I, I crossed off D, yes.
It just occurred to me that you may get questions from residents or something on the recon project. I've already seen a few calls and voicemails. They've got the streets paved, the curb is in, most of the driveways are done, but there is some work left. There's restoration behind the curb, there's a little bit of concrete work left. We're keenly aware of that. We do want them to come back and do that. They will come back and do that. But it may not be as quick, you know, it's not like I can call them and say, get here tomorrow. So we're not badgering, they're well within their contract for substantial completion. So people, I guess we'd ask their patience. The rain all year has affected this job, but we were one of the first ones they started. So we're in much better position than the eight other jobs they have to do and are trying to catch up on. So they come back and do work here when they can. And so, yeah, just please be patient and uh, and it will get done.
Okay. Public Works?
Um, the item we have tonight is the discussion related to the Wagner Park field facilities reservation policy. So the council recall that under council discussion at the last meeting, um, council member Timmerman brought up uh, the topic of being able to reserve the ball fields at Wagner Park for private events. Um, our current policy related to reservation of those facilities limits it to athletic organizations and um, for-profit and nonprofit organizations. Basically, individuals can't reserve it for their events. So that would excl-, so while we do rent the pavilion for things like wedding receptions and family gatherings and um, some commercial events and things like that, we haven't uh, at any point in the past allowed rental of the ball fields for those purposes. The discussion was, or the question of the council was, do you wanna talk about this further? The council said yes. They said, staff, can you place this on a future agenda for discussion? So we did. So staff did go through and uh, just kind of reiterated, this is what our current uh, policy and practice has been. Uh, pointed out that just earlier this year, we had reaffirmed that policy. Um, and what we did in that policy is we created tiering for priorities as to who gets precedence over other people for those events. But we also identified the number of um, facets of this that would need to be discussed, evaluated, and possibly decisions being made on if you're looking, if you're considering a policy change to allow um, those, uh, the fields to be reserved by private entities. We didn't work through all of those, we clearly didn't have the time to work through all of that. I guess the question I would say for the council at this point is, do you want to move forward with considering this? If you do, I think given the number of things that have to be reviewed, I would defer it or direct it to the Parks Commission to work through. And if you have an emphasis on it, um, such as, we'd like you to come back with a recommendation on whether we should do it or maybe um, we'd like to see if you, we can enable it, do your best, and if you can't, let us know why. Wherever that emphasis is, I think that would be good to be communicated as well, cuz our commission's always asked that question when they get projects sent to them from the council. Or if the council's like, nope, uh, we really don't wanna move forward with it, then we know that, that it's done. Kate, obviously, was the one who brought it up. I talked to her today. She wanted me to relate to the council that she would prefer the former um, on this, that it gets sent to the commission for their review and ultimate recommendations as to how we can accommodate it and what scope and whatnot.
I agree with that.
That works for me.
And I would put the extra emphasis on find a way to make it work.
Okay, um, so, so directed. I will um, talk to Jake about it and he'll schedule it for future commission meetings.
Uh, CCEC?
We did not meet this month. We'll meet in August.
Slackers. Um, Scale, Executive Committee?
Um, we did not have a meeting. Uh, all the Scale stuff was suspended in July.
As was I thirty-five? Uh, any discussion by council?
No.
Any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? We are adjourned.